It is nine o'clock. I close meeting in the Epsom County Mission Board. We'll have a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance, and two minutes from May 12, 2016. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The county commission of Epsom County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, May 12, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. Terry Cutright called a meeting to order. Present for Terry Cutright, Commissioner. J.C. Rapperty, Commissioner. Troy Brady, Commissioner. Carrie Wallace, County Administrator. Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator. Jaclyn Dick, Office Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rapperty, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of May 5, 2016, with hypographical corrections. Carrie Wallace provided a review of the Environmental Protection Agency's Brownfield Grant Program and introduced Epsom County resident Don Woody Martin, who has been active in pursuing funding for and continuing development of the Epsom County Youth Camp. It's approved that Brownfield's grant would be used to clean up, for cleanup of the tarpet area of the youth camp. Prior to Epsom County's ownership of the land in 1945, it was owned by, by Cannon Chemical Company in the early 1900s, and the tarpet area was used as a disposal site for waste generated by the plant. Since the land was acquired by the county and developed into the 4-H Camp and subsequently the youth camp, the land has been unusable and unauthorized access and exposure has been protected by an eight-foot perimeter fence. Mr. Martin and board members feel that the property could be utilized better, and Mr. Martin is requesting the commission to approve the EPA Region 3 Brownfields Assessment Grant Property Approval Questionnaire for hazardous substance types and to grant right of entry and access to conduct work at the Epsom County Youth Camp tarpet site. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rapperty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the grant questionnaire to be submitted and to grant right of entry to the tarpet area. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rapperty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved to use $5,000 from previously awarded 2012 FOCUS West Virginia Brownfields program funding to be used for cleanup of the tarpet area. Terry Cutright reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator to George Lance, Epsom County resident regarding an extension of the previously set deadline to bring his property located in Union Text District into compliance with the state's structures and sites ordinance. Two, correspondence from Janie Moore, Director of Magistrate Court Services Division of the Supreme Court of Appeals, clarifying how funds from the Worthless Check Fund are to be appropriated. Three, correspondence from Robert L. Pennington, P.D., Deputy State Highway Engineer Programming and Planning, and closing the statewide transportation improvement plan, list, listing of proposed amendments to the approved 2016-2017 stip. Four, memorandum from Mary Jo Thompson, Director of the Community Development Division of the West Virginia Development Office regarding the fiscal year 2016 Land and Water Conservation Fund Notice, invitation to submit applications. Five, notice of changes associated with motor fuel tax refund application, WV/UNFAR-14. Six, Epsom County miles reports, April 2016, as listed. Seven, Epsom County 9111 Communication Reports, April 2016, as listed. Eight, Epsom County Family Resource Network Newsletter, May 2016. Nine, agendas and, notice of meetings, as listed. Ten, meeting minutes, as listed. Eleven, meetings assisted. Twelve, appointments needed or upcoming, as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved all installments, as listed. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rapperty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the employment of seasonal McCannon Epsom recreational park staff members with pay rates as follows. Assistant managers, Kristen Costner, Adam Bromley, at $9.85 per hour. Edward Nacar, at $9.60 per hour. Lifeguards slash swim lessons, Stephen D. Wilson, Anna Brooke Newcomb, at $8.75 per hour. Lifeguards, John Allen, at $9.00 per hour. Sean Wordman, Andrew Repking, Kenzie Bosley, Lindsay Bosley, Haylen Bosley, Gregory Mack, Corey Johnson, Haley Williams, Ivy Ward, at $8.75 per hour. Lifeguards, pending certification, Mary Sims, Joseph Hush-Gistang, and Tyler Puriski, at $8.75 per hour. Admissions, Kylie Costner, and Samantha Barlow, at $8.75 per hour. Water aerobics, Melanie Sandygroves, at $20 per session. Effective date of employment for all is May 16, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rapperty, the commission approved the employment of seasonal kitchen slash housekeeping staff members for the Epsom County Youth Camp with pay rates as follows. Rosalind Freeman, head coach, at $9.00 per hour. Kendall Cohen, Corey Cohen, Rebecca DiNastis, Roberta Hoffman, Michael Lee, Morgan Rice, Dousey Sare, and Brittany Vaughn, at $9.00 per hour. And groundskeeping slash lifeguard staff, Sacree Haddix, Lance Wyatt, and Richard Dilly, at $9.00 per hour. Effective date of employment for Sacree Haddix is May 16, 2016. All other staff members will begin their employment on May 31, 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rapperty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the advertisement slash job posting for the position of full-time tax deputy in the office of the Epsom County Sheriff, pending written application of resignation letter from Arlene Harper as tactics deputy. Applications must be received no later than the closing business on Monday, May 23, 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rapperty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the job description for the position of Director of E-911 Communications Center, as submitted by Steve Linger. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rapperty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the advertisement slash job posting for the position of E-9111 Communications Center Director for Training. Applications must be received before the closing business on Friday, May 27, 2016. Position is for full-time employment and will prepare the applicant to take over the position of full-time E-9111 Communications Center Director upon the retirement of current Director Steve Linger, which is expected in September. Senator Blake, McCannon Epsom recreational facility full director, appear before the commission for discussion concerning pool operations. Mr. Blake provided information and answered inquiries concerning daily bank deposits slash night deposits, staff scheduling, and overtime. Mr. Blake advised that he is planning to cut back one lifeguard per shift and expects that it will result in savings of approximately $5,500 for the season and will still be in compliance of safety slash that regulations. Terry Cutright requested that financial reporting provide more of a breakdown of income sources. Mr. Blake will provide weekly reports of pool activities, which will include data such as the number of swims per day, usage of pool passes or pay at door, safety slash incident reports, and any information pertinent to pool operations. At 10:30 a.m., Epsom County Sheriff David Kaufman appeared before the commission for discussion concerning fiscal year 2017 budget and employee compensation and requested to meet an executive session for West Virginia Code 6-98-4. Present were Terry Cutright, J.C. Rapperty, Troy Brady, Carrie Wallace, and David Kaufman. Sheriff Kaufman exited the meeting at 11:50 a.m. The commission returned to open session at 12:05 p.m. No decisions were made in the executive session. J.C. Rapperty made a motion to take discussion items on your advisement for future consideration with a second from Troy Brady. The commission recessed at 12:10 p.m. The commission reconvened at 1:30 p.m. Carrie Wallace reviewed her request from Carolyn, E-911 Communications Center Supervisor and recommended by Steve Linger, E-911 Director, to become a member of the Critical Incident Stress Foundation. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rapperty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the request. The commission reviewed the opening slash closing schedule for the restroom was located on the alley side of the annex building, as discussed at a previous commission meeting, and requested Carrie Wallace to advise Breck Harris, County Facilities Director, of the schedule, and yes, follows. Close nighttime, Sunday through Wednesday, and open Thursday through Saturday nights during the strawberry festival. The commission also discussed conditions at the Allmark theme-a-lot and safe structures and site slides, which will be discussed at the next commission meeting. Would now further business on motion by J.C. Rapperty, seconded by Troy Brady. The commission meeting is adjourned to 2:45 p.m.
You've heard the review of our last state communication. Are there any additions or corrections? Do I all maintain the motion to approve? Send it. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So, good morning, man. It is 9:00. We have state election certification.
Mr. President, we move to certify the election for state elected officials, as directed by our candidacy.
With the exception of magistrate.
I'm sorry? With the exception of Second District magistrate, which will have a recount schedule for May 31.
I'll second that. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So, next meeting is at 9:30. It was Steve Butler, Epsom County Farm and Protection Board Chairman and Administrator of the West Virginia Farm Bureau, presentation of the Epsom County Farm and Protection Board Program Handbook for Pool. That's at 9:30. Our 9:45 is canceled. We put back on the agenda for next day.
I believe so, as long as scheduled permits.
All right. At 10:00 a.m., we have a meeting with James Ferris, Citizens and Court Council members, discuss county budget and related pending slice authorization procedures with respect to sure. Approval agreement between the Epsom County Commission and certain basic training course instructors for the expenditure of certain circle funds under the fiduciary care of the Office of Northern Humanity. 10:15, we have discussed E-911 Communications Center mobile device policy. At 1:00 p.m., we have Supervisors meeting. At 2:00 p.m., we have a board policy meeting. We're going with the idea to discuss an action or approval. Discuss correspondence from John Hayman, President of the Tennyson Lines Club, regarding the book camp at Epsom Recreation Park, and informing the commission that the Tennyson Lines Club is willing and able to provide the help, helping hands for park run questions. John, would you like to say a word?
I can. Thank you. I have with me also President-elect, Sandra Phillips, Hill Twister, and Board Director, Edith Casco, and Second Vice President-elect, soon to be installed. All these people will be elected and confirmed on the 13th of June. So, basically, looking at the park up to high school, it's used frequently and it's being maintained, but could use a little dress-up and color. And water has washed part of the roadway out, the area pulling up to Second Pavilion, and some of the fall materials underneath the equipment need replaced, but it's used quite a bit when people go to the pool, and we'd like to be the helping hands. If you provide the material and tell us what we need to do, and we can dress it up with some paint for it.
Do you need a motion on that, Carrie?
You would, but only two things I would recommend would be that we had probably a certificate of insurance, saying the commission is a judicial insurer, and also coordinate with Greg Garrison, whatever improvements they're requesting, and any paint colors so they can be approved.
Okay. Coordinate with Greg Garrison. Do we have money in the budget to shore it up?
Each year, there's money there to do maintenance projects such as that. Last year, the maintenance department really worked a lot on the pavilions.
Pavilions upgrade.
Yes. One of the problems is that we've had numerous attempts or successful vandalism at the park, and we haven't been successful in catching the individuals. So, as soon as they go up there and spend 40 hours working on the pavilions, they come back and they're spray painted and vandalized. By all means, any help that you can provide, I'm sure would be very much appreciated by Greg and his staff. The maintenance department has three full-time individuals and one part-time seasonal.
That's why we made the offer, because we know you're limited in manpower, and we can provide hands. Do it if someone will look and see what they like have done, we can meet with them and get something done. It'd be nice if we get it done by July the 4th, we have something going on.
And you coordinate with Greg Garrison?
Yes, I will.
The only other thing, should we put an amount limit if they want? If they're going to exceed it, they may come back live in that area?
Well, I think they go through Greg, Greg will know that, if you want to make the money, they can be spent, and I just think it's outstanding that the Tennyson Lines Club would like to help the commission with the recreational facility up for next high school. I appreciate it, and whatever we can do, as long as you can work through Greg, so we get to write color scheme and get to write materials and stuff. Thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity to do so. We try and do a lot for the community, and since that park was right in our community, John Stunt was the one who came up with the idea, so you can give him the hat blowing and financing project.
As we know, many organizations such as Lions and other civic organizations, volunteer fire departments are having a hard time getting volunteers to, well, this could be a very common thing throughout the country, but now seems to be a much more difficult manner to obtain volunteers and the community spirit. We appreciate Lions Club doing this. Certainly, the community at large also appreciates your efforts.
As fellow Lions, we really appreciate it and thank you, you know, for making the offer. Do I have a motion to approve the request?
Send it.
Send it.
Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I can see you're going to be supervising with that crutch you have there.
Yeah, I can see it. That's just insurance now.
Number two, approval and signature of West Virginia Board of Pharmacy Application for Permit Renewal to Handle Control Services for the period of July 1st, 2016 to June 30 of 2017. What exactly is that?
Phillois, I'm trying to call control facility.
Oh, for them to handle.
Resignation.
Yep. Okay.
Send it.
Send it.
Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. Number three.
That's it.
Has been canceled. Number four, approve the signature of correspondence to Paul Chapman regarding property left in Banks District, Tax District, and attachment 75, 7S, partial number 2.1. This letter informs the community that the commission will take corrective actions to the property if compliance is not made before June 30, 2016. We've verified in several counties. And no response. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send it.
Send it. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. Five, approve the signature of the oath of certificates of personal property tax books in real life, including the books we reviewed a month or so ago. I think you wrote this in my book, once we did. Do I have a motion to approve the signature vote?
Send it.
Has been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. Six, correspondence from Judith L. Williams, Director of James Ferris Library, requesting approval of expenditures of $170.5 payable to State Land for rent ground on July 19. This is to grant, this is the grand final event for the On Your Mark, Get Set, Read, and Get In Game Summer Reading Program. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send it.
Send it.
Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Number seven, correspondence from Judith L. Williams, Director of the James Democratic Public Library, requesting approval of the expenditure of $179.40 payable to Martin Kaufman, of West Virginia dot I, for speaker slash instructor fee and mileage as part of the Get In Game Summer Reading Program. Has she, did she say, I think she has signed up for that, Carrie?
No, I know her regular family, story time.
And that's story time, where we went and went well at it.
Yes, yes.
Do I have a motion to approve this?
Send it.
Send it.
Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye.
I'd like to say something, Mr. President. This, you know, for my time being the commission initially being an attendee at the Board of Director meetings, the works of library, and now Carrie Wallace, and I think you're on the board, aren't you, Carrie?
Yes.
And I know that you attend on regular basis now. That has been a big turnaround in the library. I mean, the participation of residents, just as a tribute to Mrs. Williams and her efforts, she's a rose out there. To get kids to read, I think everybody reads, and if you get a child to read early in life and have an interest in reading, it serves to accomplish a lot of things in terms of our future education. So, I, I'm just, this is such a difference from five or six years ago.
There are also two public computers in the library that now have public access to high-speed internet, so we welcome anyone in the community to please come to the library to have use of the high-speed internet.
It's really remarkable. I'd encourage anyone in the county that has not traveled down to that part of the county to take a trip on a weekend or something, just to see how nice that facility is and be very proud of it. And we certainly thank Mr. Curry and his futuristic view of what that could be, and it's, I think, becoming more and more every day what his, what his vision was. So, be very thankful for that. I'm sorry for that.
That's all right. You take off, come here, and they see. Moving on, number eight, approval, advancement regarding Epsom County pool opening.
Send it.
At that time, I'm sorry. Been moved, is your second? Send it. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. Number nine, approval of employment of BU recreation faculty staff effective May 29, 2016. I'm not sure I know what that is.
Page one.
Additional staff for the pool and park this summer. Page number nine.
I would move to approve the purpose of the hiring.
Send it.
Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. Number 10, approval of employment of Courtney Miller and Mackenzie Bosley as seasonal coaches for the Spices strength, and before approval, their employment will be effective immediately and their cost of pay will be reimbursed to the county in full by Spices. Before approval, Mrs. Miller will be paid $2,000 for the season, and Mrs. Bosley will be paid $1,300 for the season. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send it.
Send it. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. 11, correspondence from Melanie Edmund, Community Corrections Case Manager, partnering with BIF facilitator, announcing her resignation effective May 20, 2016. She's moving on to a state job. Federal job. Good luck to her. We encourage all of our employees, if they can do better, to do that. Technically, we don't need any proof of that, do we? Do I have a motion to approve?
Send it.
Send it. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. 12, review and approval of request for employment of Zan Gordon, Full-Time Case Manager for the 26th Judicial Circuit Community Corrections Day Report Center, Lewis County Office, effective June 6, 2016. Before approval, her pay rate will be $11 per hour. Motion to approve.
Send it.
Send it. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. 13, review and approval or request for employment of Samantha Rivera.
Rivera.
Rivera Maddes as full-time case manager for the 26th Judicial Circuit Community Corrections Day Report Center, Lewis County Office, effective June 6, 2016. Before approval, her pay rate will be $11 per hour. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send it.
Send it. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. 14, approval of correspondence, of correspondence from Beth A. Burkhart, High County Child Exchange and Visitation Program Coordinator, accepting the resignation of Crystal Gibson, Monitor, effective April 20, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send it.
Send it. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. 15, correspondence from Beth A. Burkhart, High County Exchange and Visitation Program Coordinator, requesting the employment of Bethany Jane Burkhart as site supervisor, effective mid. Before approval, Mrs. Burkhart's rate of pay will be $9.50 per hour. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send it.
Carrie. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. Number 16, correspondence from Cecile Story, E-911 Communications Center Supervisor, announcing her resignation effective May 16, 2016. Motion to approve.
Send it.
Send it.
Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. Correspondence from Arlene Harper, Tax Deputy, announcing her resignation effective May 20, 2016. Moving down to the Health Department.
Yes.
And like to wish farewell. We have a motion to approve. Send it. Send it. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. Correspondence from Martin D. Holstein, P.D., Executive Director of the West Virginia Solid Waste Management Board regarding Joyce Harris Thacker's term expiration. Approval of Joyce Harris Thacker's reappointment to the West Virginia Solid Waste Management Board effective July 1, 2016, for a four-year term ending on June 30, 2020. The Epsom County Solid Waste Board voted for Joyce Harris Thacker's reappointment during the May 9, 2016 meeting. And I say this, any board Joyce Harris Thacker wants to be on, she is a busy lady and takes it all serious. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send it.
Send it. Been moved, seconded on favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Eyes out. So ordered. 19, correspondence from Stephanie Brown, Members Service Manager. Nineteen, correspondence from Stephanie Brown, Members Service Manager for the West Virginia County Risk Pool, enclosing the West Virginia Court Self-Insurance Renewal Pact. Renewal and Signature of West Virginia Association of Counties Group Self-Insurance Risk Pool Cover Sheet to Member Agreement. Review and Signature of uninsured motor coverage offer. Review and Signature of underinsured motor coverage offer. And just about everything on that policy has gone down this year, with the exception of workers comp.
That makes all the salaries expected for the FYI this week.
I would move that we authorize the President to sign those agreements with the West Virginia Risk Pool.
Second. Been moved second on favor of shaking five, saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye, so ordered. Twenty, correspondence from Melanie Stempel, Secretary slash Treasurer of Creed Butler, requesting permission to install a little free library at the County Health Department. The materials needed to install the library will be provided and the library will be sponsored to keep books supplied to this location. Do I have a motion to approve?
So ordered.
Been moved second on favor of shaking five, saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye, so ordered. Now, 9:30, we have a meeting of Scoot Butler, Upper County Farmland Protection Board Chairman and Administrator of the West Virginia Farmland here at the presentation of the Upper County Farmland Protection Board Handbook for Approval. Hi, Steve.
Your party.
Well, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Ladies.
Thank you.
You have uncovered the new program, book that the Upper County Farmland Protection Board has approved and developed and we must present this and ask for your approval so that we can proceed with the taking of applications for farmland protection and throughout programs.
So, this language is the, is the language that...
No, that's a language that you need to use for the approval for our minutes. That's a language that you need to use for the approval for our minutes.
Do I need to read that, or?
Well, one of the commissioners would like to move.
I would move that we adopt this language for the Farmland Preservation Board.
Second. Been moved second on favor of shaking five, saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye, so ordered. Thank you. Steve, are you going back to your office?
Later today.
You got something on the man out there, sir?
Oh, hi, yes.
He saved me a stamp, thanks, I'm trying to cut that.
Our next scheduled meeting is at 10:00 a.m., which we will carry on through with the agenda. Item 21, correspondence from Edlin Beer, requesting to be reappointed to the Upper County Safe Structures and Sites Ordinance and Enforcement Agency Slice Board for another two-year term. Upon approval, his term will expire on June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Been moved second on favor of shaking five, saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye, so ordered. Twenty-two, correspondence from James Frey, requesting to be reappointed to the Upper County Safe Structures and Sites Ordinance and Enforcement Agency Slice Board for another two-year term. Upon approval, his term will expire on June 30th, 2018. Second. Been moved second on favor of shaking five, saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye, so ordered. Twenty-three, we should get focused. We're going here now with the three-year information. Items. Item is memorandum from Josh B. Wilkter, Justice Programs Monitor with Division of Justice and Community Service, advising that the member of the Division of Justice and Community Service staff will be conducting an onsite visit on June 6th, 2016 at 1:00 p.m. This is in regard to the Grant 14-B-A-W-021. Is that the approval period?
No.
Item two, memorandum from Josh B. Wilkter, Justice Programs Monitor with Division of Justice and Community Service, advising that the member of the Division of Justice and Community Service staff will be conducting an onsite visit on June 6th, 2016 at 2:30 p.m. This is in regard to the Grant Number 15-V-A-033. Number three, reminder of deadlines for submitting budget revisions from Lord Bell Ice Deputy State Auditor. Four, correspondence from Charles K. McKinney, Assistant Chief Inspector, Chief Inspector Revision of the Office of the State Auditor, enclosing a copy of the report on applying degree upon procedures of the Upper County Magic Report for the period ending December 31, 2015. The report is available for public review in the Upper County Commission Office. Is that required, do you?
No, that's just a later on, it didn't get a copy yet.
Five, United States of America Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, supplemental notice of intent to prepare an environmental impact statement and proposed land and resource plan amendment for the proposed Atlantic Coast Pipeline, request for comments on environment, environmental issues related to the new route, the facility modifications and notices of the scope meeting May 3rd, 2016. Is that on the Atlantic Coast Pipeline?
Yes.
Okay. And that's perfect. Six, adoption financial transactions, April 2016. Seven, dollar report, April 2016. Eight, capital, April 2016. Nine agendas and/or notices of meetings. Ten meeting minutes. Eleven meetings. Twelve appointments needed, we're upcoming. We have tabled items, Dave Coffman, Upper County Sheriff's Department, regarding fiscal year 17 budget and employee compensation. Next regular meeting of the Upper County Commission, June 2nd, 2016, 9:00 a.m., Upper County Board Health and Health.
Just to note, the commission meeting on Thursday, June 23rd, 2016, has been canceled.
Is that on here?
Yes. Very, very small point.
Yep. Thank you, Kerry. We don't have any bills, do they do?
Just a few minutes on.
We'll recess then and fix some bills and book, attend our 10:00 a.m. appointment. Call this meeting the Upper County Commission Act of Order. There's a ten o'clock meeting with James Frey, Citizens Court, County Member, the State County Budget and related spending, size optimization procedure with respect to SERC, approval of the agreement between the Upper County Commission and certain basic planning course instructors for the expenditures of certain CERF bonds under fiduciary care of the Office of Emergency Management. Jim?
Jim, if there's something, someone else would like to speak by all means, they can.
Okay. Well.
Okay.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Where is he?
I don't know how I got into this situation, but I've been asked by the council to try and arrange a meeting with Mrs. Wallace to discuss some concerns and issues that have been ongoing for the past year, and now we end up here. I'm not sure this is the forum that the council wanted, or the timeframe that's going to be available, but I guess we'll make the best of it. Obviously, one of the concerns that's surfaced over the past year has been training of SERC members and compensation instructors, if you will, et cetera, et cetera, which is an issue we might need to discuss, but I see that unknowns to any of the instructors, there is a policy now that you can play with that. It would be nice if we had a chance to review that before we got to this point, but that's the way things work sometimes. I don't agree with that. I've said all along that there needs to be more communication, but that doesn't seem to work. The policy that I've read there is, to me, is really confusing. I think it's, I think it's a simple process. It's always been a philosophy of our SERC program that our instructors take the course that's provided by the Emergency Management Institute, and so they're technically certified instructors. And I know we've had a problem in the past with, you might have 15 people sign up and only five of us, they show up, we have no way to control that. And the night that they show up, I don't think it's the night you cancel a program. If you only get six show up, you go ahead and do the prep, the program. So I know it's been unfortunate in the past where maybe the cost per student, if you want to get in that much detail, has been a little high, but, you know, it is what it is. I think this is, you know, pretty confusing to me, but, you know, that's certainly, certainly your decision to do what you want with it. I don't know if anybody wants to speak about this part of it before we go any further. So that's, you know, I think it would have been nice if we were to have a chance to look at this before you adopted or discussed it. I don't know that it even lies what the compensation is. I guess it's something we, if you adopted it, it's something we have to live where the council has to live, but I just think, I think it's very confusing. The other issue I think was, along the same, same line with CPR training, and there's, it's been implied that CPR training can be found for free at the Buchanan Fire Department. I'm not seeing where anybody gets free Red Cross certified CPR first aid training. They do it at the firehouse for free? No, the city pays for the training of those people. It's not free. It's free to the person, but somebody pays a fee ultimately. So I think that's a misconception. We've been successful, I think, in the past, providing the training. The council has picked up the tab, and in the end result, the commission actually pays for that if it comes out of our, our allocated funding, but still, we get people trained. I think the important thing with this whole process is the more people we train in the basic SERC program, the better off the county is. Whether all those people are active is another issue, but the fact that we've got 160 or 180 people.
Two hundred and one.
Two hundred and one people in this county trained to do basic CPR, basic first aid, basic search and rescue, incipient fire control, triage, I mean, I think that's, that's an asset to this county. So worrying about how many we train or, or how many get involved in certain things, I'm not sure that's really important. I think the important thing is that we've got people in the community that know how to take care of each other, and we want to continue to do that. And the same thing applies with, with the CPR and the first aid. Yeah, we have to pay to do that, or pay somebody to do it, but that's, more people that we've got trained that can help their neighbors, and I think that's what this is all about. One of the things that was a little confusing to me was, there was a statement made, or I think maybe I saw an email. Obviously, as it's been, the eight years that I was in the OEM office, budget was an issue every year, and it still is, I think it will forever. I don't know when that's going to end, but we're, we're always scratching, but whether it was a contracted service or whether it was a P-card purchase, I'm not aware that there had to be any preapproval as long as it was within your budget constraints. Now we're understanding that anything you purchase has to go through the P-card process, which I understand, but if you have a contracted service, if you're going to bring somebody in to instruct a class, you've got to get preapproved. That's something that we have not heard that before. Is that, is that the policy? Is that the procedure?
That was what the commission discussed in budget hearings this year. But prior to the payment, they would want to approve the instructors' pay.
To make sure, that's this year, Jim, because budget issue.
I guess one of my concerns is, from where I'm coming from, I guess, is these things kind of pop up, and why isn't there a mechanism that that information gets out to all the county agencies? Why do we find these things out in the stream or in the middle of something? You know, if you're going to change a policy or procedure, why isn't that submitted to all the agency heads, all your volunteer organizations, everybody's on the same page? There's that, there's no communication there. And I said that from day one. With, one thing we lack here is communicate with your people.
That notice was sent by you to SERC, correct? With the new spending policy, is it they would have to get approval?
Not, I haven't, we haven't seen anything like that. Has anybody seen that?
In an email, I thought that that...
Yeah. Basically, that I am authorized to use the P-card. If it's something I can't purchase with a P-card, I have to discuss it with either Carol or yourself. And I can't enter into a contract with the person who repairs the copying machine. How can I enter into, I'm not authorized to enter into contracts.
Right. We don't, I mean, for instance, just the recent printer copy that was purchased for the commission office, we don't sign that contract, it's on the commission's agenda to sign. And there's an example from the James Frey Curry Library that's on here today, requesting the payment of an individual for their summer reading program. So it's not specific to CCC and SERC. And that's why I didn't feel that it would be appropriate to have the meeting just with myself, because I don't accept the policy, that's only the commission would have to discuss. I can discuss whatever issue you're having by all means, but as far as coming to an agreement, that's something the commission needs to do. Initially, I recommended that one commissioner attend the meeting because then it wouldn't have to be public, but in order to keep them all on the same page, so everyone knows what the policy is, I suggested that we meet today with all three of them present.
Well, I mean, all, I think all the council wanted to do was just down, have a meeting discussed, nobody expected anybody to make any decisions or send any policy. It was just an opportunity to discuss some issues that they have. I mean, I, I don't want to speak for all of them, there are several here, and if they have issues, I think you need to bring them up.
I have things. And what I have, concentrate on them, but like for you to listen to, is maybe good things that we have done over the last 12 years. And here we're getting into things that are causing problems, but as we just said, we've trained 201 people. We've had many trainings for ourselves and others, SERC, CPR, shelter training, animal rescue training. A school program that is, was the first in the state that had SERC-trained people in every school, and we have trained 83 school members, and they still have their SERC program. We've also participated in drills, Superstorm Sandy, the Duratio, two searches that I'm aware of, community flow studies, hazardous material, which we passed that information on to the LUC. Also, the pandemic flu exercise, which was quite a while ago, but we were all there in full force. So I, I just want you to know that there's good things that's happening. Also, we are in the county EOP, and we're in the school disaster plan, and I think we're being micromanaged till we're almost out. We, we don't know where to turn. We need to get back to what we were doing, we want to do these things with the community. We don't need to be micromanaged all the time. So I'm just urging you not to, at this time, approve this policy until, maybe we have a little more time. So I'm just urging you not to, at this time, approve this policy until maybe we have a little more time to look over it. I think it's offensive, in a way, to our trainers, one of whom is sitting right beside me and has trained a lot of these 200 people. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I would just like to speak to the breakdown of the dollars per person spent for training. I think we need to look at that in a year timeframe and not a per-class timeframe. Because, you know, like Jim stated, we can have 50 people sign up and, as Mr. Rafferty knows, sometimes when you start the class, you only have one person show up, and we have no control over that. And to break it down in class for 17.50 cents per person or $17 per person per class is a fallacy. It needs to broaden. We may have a class that has 24 in it. We may have a class that has six in it. We may have a class that has five in it. And the important thing is we're training the community, whether it be one citizen at a time or it be 24 citizens at a time.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that when I got this letter, we received it, it was the first time that we got any notification. But with that said, being involved in the budget process when I was working, it was a communication. It was a two-way street. We sat down, and if this has to do with budget, which I understand, you know, things are tight. But I think we should reopen this and communicate and talk and come up with, if it's going to be a plan, that everybody has some input. So far with this, this is just, I mean, it was just given to us. Here it is, and I assumed that this was going to be voted on today.
It's on the agenda, but they can always table or...
Defer it.
And I think that's what should be done until a discussion can be made and a plan can be made up, when everybody's shaking their head in the same direction. And I think it could be done. That's all I have to say.
I think communication is great. As a county commissioner that represents all the citizens in the county, we have to look at, as commissioners, how we spend the dollar. I think CERT does an outstanding job. When you set up a class to try to make it cost, you know, make it efficient, I like to see that as being one of the county commissioners. And if we can postpone a class and get 10 people in instead of just having one person show up. I know several boards that I sit on will go to a board meeting, and there's not enough members there. You all may have the meeting. And we've been sending out emails to make sure that the board members would be there, so you all may, we could have the meeting. I understand all that, but when you represent, in my opinion, I represent every citizen in Upshur County. When I spend the tax dollars here, I want to get the best, you all may, for that. I think communication is great. I'm sorry for the microcommunication. I can assure you that all the commissioners here is absolutely proud of what CERT does for Upshur County, the citizens in the county, and being there for the citizens of Upshur County. So I'm just speaking for myself, you all may. But I watch every dollar to see that it's justified. So I don't want you to take offense to get in the letter that you've got to have 10, and it comes out to sell $170. We're just trying to be... I'm trying to be cost-effective to the taxpayers. Because I don't want to end up Upshur County as the state is or the federal government is and go, we don't have any money. You all may, because I like to see where it goes. And with that being said, if we spent money, we shouldn't have spent CERT half, you all may. And we've done some things that I would probably change today if I could. But communication is great. I appreciate what CERT does, and we'll see, you all may, we can certainly work together to make it better. My opinion.
Knowing this, we know the fact of lack of volunteerism across the country. Just this afternoon or this morning, I don't believe you were here, we, I lauded the volunteers of the Lions Club, Pennington Lions Club. The willingness of people in CERT to come out in various elements, like the duration of Sandy and even the common things such as assisting during festivals or other special activities that engage in the county. We're appreciative of that. We need volunteers. Trying to balance the need and to recognize and to encourage people to volunteer is very important. It is very important. But you're trying to balance that with the restrictions we have placed on us and through Jim. To operate within some means of prudence in terms of funding. As I've said to several of you in the past at meetings, LUPC meetings, but I've had a chance to encounter you, that when we set a line item budget, doesn't mean that you can't come to us at some point requesting additional funding, depending if we have it or if we can't spare it. We always have to make that determination. But it can be discouraging for any organization. And I believe we've had that happen here with other organizations that provide quality of life, which we have in the past provided funding for when we had extra funding in our budget. All of a sudden, tell those same people after four or five years, who are giving several thousands of dollars, that this year there is no extra funding to give you. And it is difficult for the three commissioners and the staff to make those decisions. I think there's merit to what's been discussed here in terms of placing this policy, deferring it, until we have had a chance to sit down and talk. One of the problems we have is a continuing problem. I don't think anyone that's outside the commission or understands the state rules understand that the three commissioners or two commissioners meeting at the same time can be interpreted as violating the open meeting law. That's why Carrie, in explaining the situation and wanting to meet, at least one commissioner, meet with the group. Because if two commissions were to meet outside an open session such as this, we might be accused of having an illegal meeting. Some people are sensitive to the point where at lunchtime, we, all three can't go to lunch together. And if two of us make the decision to go to lunch together, it's a... It's at some risk if someone were to complain that we were negotiating, making agreements on things. So yeah, sometimes a lack of communication, what is perceived as lack of communication is not intentional, but it's the world in which we find ourselves having to live in, to work in. But I know that the commissioners, I know that Carrie, and I know you all, and I know Jim Farrell, have no problem sitting down and discussing these issues. I don't think there's merit for that. I would recommend that we defer action on this proposal. Not saying it lacks merit, but getting a chance to, for you to educate yourselves on what the intent is behind this. The reasoning behind it that is sound. But again, we can discuss it, or someone can discuss. I don't know. It'll be, which commissioner would take him?
Would you like to appoint one of the commissioners to attend the next CERT meeting along with Jim Farrell or Brian Shreys to discuss the policy and come up with a policy that everyone agrees on, then it'd be presented to the commission for approval?
I think, I think CERT is an organization, individuals that are involved in it are serious-minded. They want to do something good for the community. I know Jim is very service-oriented, very well experienced, and understands the restrictions that we operate under, not just locally, but grants we get from the federal and state. Restrictions attached to those. Jim wants to make sure that what we do, what he does on our behalf is within the best intents of the grants as well as the best interest of what the commission wishes to accomplish. So I would, I would say that we appoint someone. I know where this is going to go, but we appoint someone as a, from the commission to attend meetings and to try to resolve some of these thorny... And I think a lot of it isn't necessarily rooted in factual basis. I think a lot of it is indicated, it's a lack of communication for whatever reason. Or, but I think we're a lot closer together than you, in fact, in terms of what we all want to work together to do. I don't think there's that gap that's so far wide that we can't resolve some of the concerns that are expressed. I believe that. So Churchill had his, he had to use a history analogous. Churchill said, "Jaw jaw is better than war war." I say, I kind of think that's a, not that we're at the void, but a war, but when there is disagreement, we need to, we need to sit down and talk. My recommendation would be to defer this and arrange for a meeting at some point in the near future to try to resolve one at a motion. I'll make that.
Let's look and see what the next CERT meeting is. It might be...
It's the second Wednesday of every month.
And I'm just wondering, can we come up with a policy? I mean, is there any way to come up with a policy? Because wait a minute, it shouldn't be 10, it should be 5. No, we only got four. No, it should be 15. I mean, I don't know of any way for this county commission to make a policy. You all may, that says you don't have 10, you have to have at least 5. Well, you can't have no more than 15. I mean, how would you ever know how many you're going to have, you all may? And I think it's something that, I don't think a member of this county commission needs to sit, you all may, and go, oh, let's have a discussion. I think people at CERT, you all may, OEM and so on and so forth can sit down, work out a plan that we all... And I don't know of any policy that can be made. I mean, you pick any three of the commissioners here that says in that CERT meeting, and we go, yeah, yeah, we'll set a policy. But the next class you have, the policy we set, you may not be able to fill. I mean, we could have you send emails to everybody that says they're going to come. All 10 of them says they're going to be there. You're living within your policy. You call the instructor, he shows up. Wait a minute, two had emergency, couldn't be there. Wait a minute, you're in violation of the policy. So I don't really know whether, you all may, I just would like for CERT to work with OEM and everybody work together to try to save the citizens of this county every tax dollar they can. Because sitting here as a county commissioner, I'd like to leave this county a little better off when I leave than it was when I came. But we all need to work together. You set a policy, in my opinion, wait a minute, you have to have 10. You have to have 15. You have to have at least 5. I think we need to work together and send emails to see if people's going to show before the instructor comes, and at all times try to save the citizens of tax dollars if we can. So I really, in my opinion, do not think that a commissioner should be, you all may, if they want to attend, if you all think that a commissioner might be, of course, only one could show because anything other than that would be a violation. But if you think that a commissioner needs to be there, you all may, I don't think we need to sit there as commissioners and go, okay, we are going to appoint J.C. or Buddy Brady or Terry Cutright to be at every CERT meeting because we're going to be there. I don't think that's necessary. Of course, I've been outvoted here before. I could be outvoted here in a matter of seconds, but that's just my opinion.
I think the purpose of the meeting, buddy, is not to identify a number or numbers. It would be to have the OEM side of the house and the CERT side come together and understand the basics about the training, the basics about. It doesn't have to specify a special number unless that's agreed to by both parties or some decision that ultimately has to be made by the commission.
I mean, this, this training process has worked for how many years, Brad? Have you been doing it?
Twelve years.
Twelve years? And this because last year we had a glitch where people didn't show up. Now it's a big deal. It worked fine for a long time.
Jim, I'm just trying to...
I think nobody understood that the clock is running out. There's one month left to the fiscal year. And what happened last year is Mr. Farrey's resignation came up between the day the training started and when I had assigned the voucher. And last year, there were two paid instructors for four students who finished the course. Started with five, one left after the first round. And then there's the whole other issue about feeding people, which I told the administrator, I don't have a problem with feeding volunteers who sit at an 8-hour test, but we know there are state issues with that.
We don't feed anybody.
No.
There were pizzas bought last year.
We bought it ourselves. We didn't commit anything.
Okay, here we go. So afterwards, the amount per student was over $100 per student. And I was left to authorize, you know, to sign off on a voucher. So we've got one month left. I had no idea if a class is coming up. I said, well, let me, so I went to, after last year, I went to Citizen Corps Council. And I said, even RISA has a minimum number of students. Commission does not want to set the number of students. We're asking you to set the minimum number of students. Just, just to be fair. This went on and on. Recently, the number was thrown out of eight. And I said, well, that's 100% more than the train last year. Spoke with the director recently, what is the smallest class you've ever allowed before you cancel? Because I've been an instructor, and I've shown up, and you don't have the minimum number of people, and the class is canceled, I don't even get paid for that day. So they said six. So I said, okay, those are, those are single-digit numbers. I think they're reasonable. So if you have at least eight signed up and at least six show up, I think we have a baseline. So I couldn't get any information if there was going to be a basic class this year. So I wanted something that I could go forward with, that if there was a last second push to put a class on in this fiscal year, yeah, this is good. I think I can get this passed. So now, we've only got a couple of days. I sent an email last week. I said, well, you know, you need batteries. You could use this. You could use that. I haven't heard anything back. Do you want me to go out and purchase it or not? It's, and I explained in the email, it is not fair to Carol Smith and the people down in the county coming with a bunch of bills the last week of the fiscal. So all this was an effort to try and get, sir, whatever they need before the clock runs out.
I got a question. Evidently, you have people signing up for class, and they're not showing up for class. So would it be possible, when they sign up, they can make a $10 deposit or something that's refundable on completion of the class and not refundable if you don't make the class?
I mean, I suppose you could do that. I don't think there's anything says you can't.
Anybody else? Is there a problem with that?
As far as I know, you know, CERT is a totally volunteer organization.
I understand that.
Like you say, and we all agree, that you may have 15 people, four show up. Like you say, and we all agree, that you may have 15 people, four show up. You can't control that. But the whole premise of SERC is to train people to take care of themselves, their family, and friends in a disaster. If you train four, or you train 400 at a time, you still have people who are trained that can do that. Now, everything else is icing, coming out for the Durex show and things like that. You know, that... You have volunteers come out. Can we make everybody come out? No. But as far as the training goes, I always see that if we can train four or five people, then let's train them. Can we control those costs? There may be a way. The course is a 21-hour course. We have cut it down to what, Brad?
13, 15.
15?
15.
Yeah. So we're trying, we save money there.
All I'm saying is, that course can't even sign your name, y'all sign it. But if you've got some skin in the game, and you know you complete the course, you get your money back. And if you don't, you don't get the money back, then that helps pay for the four-year training.
Yeah, I think you're missing the point. I think if you charge somebody 10 or 20 dollars, it's going to be a volunteer. You all mean, first of all, they're going to be a volunteer. And I understand the 10 or 20 dollars that you got to sign, you go, "Okay, if they don't show up, at least we can pay for the instructor." But when you sit back and you look at the bigger picture, and sometimes if you only have four or five in class, and I'd like to have 10, you all mean, I'd like to really have 20 or 30, because I'm a little bit on the conservative side. You sit back, and all of a sudden, you have an emergency here, and you've got 10, 15, 20, 30 people out here, volunteers that are trained. That's not costing the citizens a dime, you all mean? It becomes priceless, you know what I mean? And I can understand the policy of wanting 10, you know what I mean, to try to save the county, but I don't understand, you know what I mean? So I really don't think a commissioner needs to sit in a meeting with SERC and OEM. However, if you think a commissioner needs to be there, I'm sure you've got one of the three to do that. As far as putting in the 10 or 20 dollars, I don't... If I was going to be a volunteer, and I was going to come down and take that class, and all of a sudden I have to pay 20 dollars, I go, "Wait a minute, I'm volunteering, I'm not doing this." And I think that's...
That's to be the exact thing we were trying to do. If you don't want to be there, don't be there, but don't tell them you'll be there.
But I think, I think that's the reason you don't have volunteers today, because you've got all the stipulations, classes, you've got to take the train, you know what I mean, it's like fire departments and everything else. You put so many guidelines on them. They don't become volunteers anymore, because it is not worth it. There are several people here who'd like to be volunteers, but wait a minute, you've got to go through all these classes, you've got to do this, I've got to do that, I need to be here. And people go, "I'm not going to do that anymore." You know what I mean? They're not going to do it. And if you look at the volunteers, you're finding volunteers mostly are getting some aid from them, because the youth won't do it to start with, you know what I mean? And you put so many stipulations on being a volunteer, people go, "I'm not doing it." You throw the 10 or 20 dollars in, you all mean? It's like, "Wait a minute, I want to be a volunteer, now you want to charge me 10 or 20?" Forget it, I'm not interested, in my opinion.
And I think your point is well taken. And this is part of it. You know, the more rules and more restrictions you put on it, the less likely you're going to have to have volunteers. And I think we're seeing that in our SERC program. They're saying, you know, "If we're going to do all this stuff, it's not worth it." Because we're worried that something, somebody might sue us, or some government agency might look over our shoulder, come on. It's not going to happen.
And you're saying in SERC, just imagine what they're saying in the fire department.
I mean, it's just, I think it's just getting... We're getting carried away with regulation.
And of course, the trouble is, if you don't have it, everybody's looking for a reason to sue you over something, you know what I mean?
No, this is, this is West Virginia. It's not somewhere else where people are suing. I'm sure again or sooner or later, but we're not at that point yet. People are still interested in helping people here. And, you know, they're not worried about suing somebody.
So you see, so you see the problem you have, so...
I think communications is correct. I think the letter or the policy to have 10, you know what I mean, was not taken the way it was meant to be taken, you know what I mean? Of course, the policy says you're going to have 10 before you have a class. I guess I'd take, you'd have to have 10, but go ahead.
Six? At what point, at some point, there's a mission, a tolerance. I understand the problem, I understand the volunteer agency. But still, there's one month left to the fiscal year to get this done. Is there going to be a CPR course this year? Is there going to be a basic course?
There's a CPR class scheduled.
Correct.
As far as whether or not, as far as whether or not the commission should be involved in trying to mediate or be involved in... So I have an issue here. As far as the matter of public safety, as far as I'm concerned, we have an Office of Emergency Management, which we are critical to operations, but we do have potential disasters, or we do have something on onward like that. So I think that this, that's really with the commission is, what else do we do? I mean, why are we here? Why are three of us sitting here debating the issue as to whether or not we should be involved? It's, it impacts the community. It impacts the very ability for us to help each other, but at the same time, recognize that we have an Office of Emergency Management, which is critical, but we also have volunteers, which are critical. Anything B is commissioners, or the commission as an entity, can do to ensure that both operate, the volunteers in conjunction with our Office of Emergency Management, work on the same page, is basic to what, why we even sit here at all? Why we're elected? Why we serve? So I disagree with you, Mr. Green. Well, I understand the fundamentals of money, but that, this issue is far greater than just the fundamentals of money. It's how we as a community work together. It's how we as a community, and we as the responsible to the community as commissioners, exercise our authority. So I understand where you're coming from, but I disagree. But we all know we can disagree and still function properly. We've said that many times.
May I speak to that? This all boils down to a budget issue, which we all, everybody on the council, that's why we have a council. We're given X amount of dollars. It's been 2,000 or 2,500 in past years, whatever that magic number is. This coming year, we understand via email from Kerry to whoever, it's 750. We don't have a problem with that. When we sit down as a council and we decide what we're going to spend those funds on, we decide, number one, training is the reason we are SERC. That is what FEMA wants us to do. We train. Anything else we buy beyond that is great. We're given a 2,000 or a $750 budget. We may get new batteries, we may get a trailer through a grant, or we may get whatever. But the council was given $2,000 to spend the way the council sees it should be spent. Now, in one year, if we don't train 20 people, then we have the extra money to go out and buy cloths and blankets or, you know, whatever we need, supply-wise, to do that. This year, we have decided that the training needs to be done with that 2,000 dollars within that budget. If there's money left over, you know, it'll go back. So my point to this is, you know, this big issue of, well, our budget's been cut. We, you know, we will work within that budget, $750. We have until June 30 to spend the '15, '16 budget. And we have plans to spend that money. We may not get to all of it, but we have budgeted it down pretty low, haven't we, Shannon?
Well, we wanted to have our SERC class and our CPR class, which would use a lot of what we have left, yes.
Right. And this class that we have for CPR training, the council approved $30 for each member of council's payment to be paid. And if we have seats opened up, you know, for citizens, we will also pay for them. That's the money that we were appropriated, that the council approved to spend it on. Now, if you have a problem with the $30 payment, or you have a problem with the amount of money that we pay an instructor, we can work with that next year's budget. But this budget for us has already, we've already voted on how we're spending our money and setting our classes accordingly.
I have one little correction. When Jim was referring to a class that had four students and two instructors, the two instructors were not in the class with four students. They break the class down. There's one instructor that may do certain subjects, another one that does other subjects. So we don't have two instructors walking around with four students. Just wanted to correct that.
Not good to type that one in.
Jim, you did sign up for the class at the Keanan Volunteer Fire Department, and Joey Backs, I believe, was the individual that taught it. Joey or Lynn, I get them confused. And they offered for $15 a class, you just had to pay for your card. So it would be beneficial for SERC or CCC to contact them to see if they would arrange a training for you all. I believe they offered it to us, unlimited number of individuals. They could have two trainers if necessary. We had very little people sign up here with the county. However, it sounds like with your 200 people, you may have a larger turnout, and it would be less cost for the group.
Oh, 15 is the...
For $15.
And we're willing to look at that, you know? But this is, this is, this year's budget's set. Next year, we're perfectly willing to adjust, to look adjusting costs like that.
Motion to defer action on the... Till we have a chance to, to, parties, discuss, clarify themselves with the intent. I think sometimes things in writing, the written language doesn't always convey the intent or the feeling behind the motivation. So sometimes just reading something, you interpret it totally differently than if you sit down and verbally communicate with someone as to what the intent of the language was. So I think that may very well be the issue here. So I move that we defer action on this policy issue until we have a chance to have the parties get together and discuss.
And who are we wanting to get together and discuss the policy? Is my question, just so we know moving forward.
Well, why don't we let OEM and SERC get together and see if they can get it worked out and discuss it and communicate? And then move...
I don't use the word moderator, it's a strong word, but they need to have someone come in, either Tabitha or Kerry, sit down. Keep us posted as to what direction it's going. And if we...
That's not...
Buddy says if we have to have the commissioner attend, then we can make a decision on that. That's my motion.
You want to state that again? At the time of the third, you know what I mean? We could be in a district, but what's your motion?
My motion is to defer action on this pending a chance for OEM and SERC representatives to meet with Kerry or Tabitha as an observer and to report back to us, the commission, results of the meeting, positive and hopefully positive versus the alternative. Then if there continues to be some disagreement or miscommunication or whatever, then she'll rematch our attention when we will make a decision as to whether or not... Ultimately, the policy has to be decided. There has to be a policy that has to be decided. But maybe, you know, we can try to accommodate both sides. If that doesn't work, we still have to make a decision, as a commission.
I'm not going to second that motion. And the reason I'm not going to second that motion, I think we have intelligent people here. With SERC, we have OEM. Certainly, they can get together. I don't think we need to have Kerry Walsh or Tabitha down there, you all mean, to oversee and report back to the commission. I think we're dealing with intelligent people here. They all want to do the best for up to county. So my motion would be is to set this aside, same as you. Let them, SERC, OEM get together, for sometimes lack of communication, or sometimes you can get an email, or somebody says something, automatically you take it the wrong way. And then if they need us, or they need Kerry or Tabitha, or one of the commissioners, they can certainly let us know. And that will be my motion.
I agree with Buddy.
I can't agree with that.
Okay, please make a motion.
I'll second it.
Then move, Shannon, on favor, shake a five, say a nine. I have a story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all have a good day. And if we can help, let us know. And we're not always what you all mean to try to do, like so. So for the problem, or if by some means one's off one of the missions or whatever, just let us know. Okay?
Okay, we have a 10:15 meeting now to discuss E911 Communications Center mobile device policy.
Just so you all know, Steve sent an email, the board from Randy. I mean, you can speak if you wish, you don't necessarily have to. But in short, she's requesting for you to reconsider your mobile device policy that you have at OEM, or sorry, at 911, which was approved on January 15th of 2015. And it states that cell phones, including smartphones, tablets, computers, pagers, voice, or video recorders and cameras cannot be in the dispatch area, also known as the radio room. From what I understand, Ms. Walton is taking online college courses and would like access to her laptop computer for those college courses, and is asking for you to reconsider the policy. I've given you a copy of the policy.
Some of the courses that I can count are after re-certification, I mean, EMD, the recertification. Probably after re-certification, we have to re-certify the AFGA every two years now, because they just updated that in EMD every two years. And we need the AFGA nominations and the magnetic particles. But with my online courses, I can still count those in part of it.
These classes and courses, everyone that is a dispatcher have to take in order to maintain their certification?
Not the college courses, but the AFGA nominations and the particles, you all mean? AFGA just come out with a new addition, so we all have to update to the curriculum.
We, my thinking is, we have a policy in place, and I'm against making any exceptions to its changes. I think we should give the policy as it is.
If it's related to the opportunity, if I understand it, those are individual college courses that benefit you as opposed to something that all the employees would use to recertify their position. I concur with Terry. One, you're there to perform services and to be focused on emergency situations that may arise. And I think anything that would take your attention away from that particular service that you're providing as an employee, I don't want to use the word too strongly, but jeopardize a call committee that your focus might not be, you know, working today.
Well, I guess that if it has to do with 911 duties, I don't have a problem with a person doing that. Because I know that a lot of times you're sitting up there for three or four hours, and you don't have a call, which you could be on your computer, you could be... I understand that. But I'll have to concur, if it doesn't have to do with 911 training or whatever, once we would open the door for that... would open the door for that, everybody would be wanting their cell phones, laptops and everything in there, because if we let you do it, you know what I mean?
I have a personal number, anybody with this one? This, whenever we go, like Steve mentioned to me about taking fire dispatch and police dispatch, if you go, like if you enter into that, you have to recertify one all that every so often.
If it, if it has to do with 911 and performing your duties at the 911 center, I do not have a problem with that, you know what I mean? That's my opinion, because I've been outbooked here at SERC times, and I could get outbooked. If it's anything other than that, I have a problem with, because once you open up the door, you know what I mean? Well, I get on there for college courses and stuff, you know, and everybody wants their laptops, cell phones. So, I concur with them in one way, but if it has to do with 911 duties, you know what I mean, and you're learning about it, and getting more training, in reference to your duties at our dispatch center, I don't have a problem with it.
Randy, can you use the little computer for the training that you're-
Some, but sometimes, like where we set up, like the, my college courses, you can't do on my app, you have to do it there. And it's not fair for me to be on the same side every day, and not where my app is too.
My only question is, how are you going to limit the use of the laptops only to the college courses or the courses that are specific to 911?
I said, once, once you open that door, I understand that, once you open that door, so, I guess I have to concur with my two colleagues here. It's just a shame that if you're working that, the dispatch center, and you're gaining knowledge to make you a better dispatcher to handle calls and stuff, that we're not going to let an employee that's working for us, that has three or four hours in between calls, to gain knowledge that would be beneficial to maybe the next call coming in.
I completely agree, and I wish Randy the best in our college courses. My only question is, how, what are you going to tell your supervisors? Because they are the ones that have to monitor that environment, and how are they going to have the authority to say, yes, you can be on that, or no, you cannot be on this other one?
And the other, the other issue that came up during the previous discussion, whatever side you take on, if you were engaged in something beyond what your official duties require, and if that, something you were doing, whether it's taking classes from college online or doing anything that impacted negatively on someone's emergency situation, you do have a liability issue up there.
We do take the actual limitations while we are at work, and that is the computer base. That's an online class, and we sign up for it to make sure we add all of our credits to recertify.
Right. But it's not related to your task at hand. I think there lies the difference. There's a, I mean, I've never taken a class online, but my, when they advertise it on TV for various classes, one of the, one of the factors they point out is that you can do it anytime, any, anytime, day or night, that it's convenient for you to do that, and you can work it into your schedule. So, with that, you know, you said, that's how I view it. I applaud you for improving your educational background, everything that, I think it's best, as the other two have said as well, that it remain something you do on your own time, as opposed to the time that we have working.
Randy, I'll ask you, because you're in that environment, and maybe you have an idea of how this can be worked out. If laptops were allowed to be at the center only for the college courses or continued education courses that are pertinent to the position, do you have an idea of how the other access internet or programs could be limited on personal computers? That's, that's where I'm fearful, that how do you keep people off of these other public sites and Facebook and comments? That's where I think we get into issues that we've had before and the reason why the policy was created. I don't know if maybe we could look at finding a computer here in the courthouse or another county facility that's been retired, that can move up to the comm center to create another public computer access point? Would that help?
Yeah.
I mean, because you have the one now, and I understand if you have three or four people on shift, then only a course one's going to be able to use that, and knock on wood, a lot of times at the comm center, you're quiet, and then sometimes you have no extra time to focus on that course or continued education training. Is that something you may be interested in, finding another public access computer that could be limited as to what the dispatchers would have access to? They could take their continued education training courses, but they wouldn't have access to other websites?
How do you limit that?
It can be limited with global science and technology as to what websites can be accessed.
Okay, while we let you look into that, but other than that, you know, the reason we have a policy, for our own policy, we're going to need to have a policy.
So, Randy, would that satisfy you, if we were be able to find another public access computer?
I would.
I think we'll be able to find one.
Okay, good.
Okay, Carrie, back.
Sorry about your late.
Have a good day.
We've got here, we've got all of the papers. Yeah. This is the night for, I guess we'll reset. Reset to the one, the last two perubers, and me.